We need to do the prayer and the pledge. Our prayer will be led this evening by Councilwoman Sylvia.
Okay, if we bow our heads if you'd like. Lord, Father God, we thank you for another coming together. Lord, we asking that you would lead and guide us as we lead and guide our city, Father God. Give us the wisdom and knowledge to lead in God, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I will lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Ms. Chris, can we get a roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Williams.
President from Saginaw, City of Saginaw.
Thank you.
Councilmember Balls.
Councilman Balls, President from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Bench.
Councilmember Bench, present in Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Ostache.
President from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Scherzer.
President from Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Copeland. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present in Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilmember Flores.
President Saginaw, Michigan.
And Mayor Moore.
President Saginaw, Michigan, thank you. Any announcements?
Um, no announcements, we just have one proclamation on the agenda tonight, declaring April 3th, 2021 as Arbor Day.
And we will have Councilwoman Bench reading that. Councilwoman Bench.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, City of Saginaw proclamation. Whereas in 1872, James Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for plant, the planting of trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and now is observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes and for our fires. Trees are also increase property values, enhance our economic vitality, the economic vitality of businesses, business areas and beautify our community. The City of Saginaw would like to recognize trees for the tri-cities. It was established in 2008 and since its inception has planted over 705 trees in various locations throughout the City of Saginaw. And whereas these trees provide numerous aesthetics and economic benefits in which trees for the tri-cities made a significant investment in the community by purchasing, planting and watering and nurturing these trees in the City of Saginaw to improve the quality of life for the city, for city residents and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Trees for the tri-cities has collaborated with the City of Saginaw and committed to monitoring trees and replacing trees that were lost in various locations within the city. In 2020, the City of Saginaw Street Section, right, section of the Right of Way Division also pruned 300 trees and removed 611 trees. Now therefore be it resolved on behalf of Brenda F. Moore, the Mayor of the City of Saginaw, who does hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the City of Saginaw and furthermore urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And witness thereof, we have hereto, she has hereto set her hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed on this 12th day of April in the year of our Lord 2021. Signed Brenda F. Moore, Mayor and Councilperson Michael D. Balls, Mayor Pro Tem, Annie Bench, George Copeland, Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostache, Autumnell Scherzer and Reggie Williams, along with our City Manager, Tim Morales.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Here we are now at public input.
I'd like to remind all of our, well, our public speakers that you have a limited three minutes. Please get all of your points in during that three minutes. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Louis Meeks. Mr. Meeks, are you on?
I am, yes, thank you.
All right, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, uh, Mayor Moore, it is fun every time I get on here to listen to you, have fun. So I, it makes me happy to see you having fun every time, so thank you for that. So, uh, yes, we have a site at 2205 North Michigan that has a provisional permit that was issued last week. And we're super appreciative of that, um, of that provisional permit for a marijuana dispensary. And we're going to do big things in Saginaw. You know, this particular site is this ugly old red, uh, gas station that's been closed for years and years and it's right off the exit ramp off 675. And, you know, the, it's an incredible eyesore and we're certain that there's contamination on the site that needs to be cleaned up. And, you know, with that said, that we, we couldn't be more excited about investing about $1.2 million in your community and tearing down that building, cleaning up the contamination and building an amazing dispensary facility that will make the city and all of us proud. And, um, and the challenge we have and the reason I wanted to come on is that there's this, the 500-foot buffer rule that is not established until after all state approvals. And, um, as you know, the state approvals can't take place until after the building is built and, and has been inspected. And the problem that we have is it's a seven to 10-month project to build a brand-new building for you and for us. And then the other thing is that there's a site that was given a special use permit 250 feet from us, um, recently. And by virtue of the fact that they're an existing building that just needs a remodel job, they're clearly going to be able to get, get approved first and then establish the buffer. And then all of a sudden, even though we were, you know, first to get our provisional use permit, we're going to get buffered out. And it's just, it's, it's rough because, you know, we use Plunkett Cooney, uh, a law firm that's probably one of the largest marijuana law firms in the, in the state. And they've done projects in 70 different municipalities. And, you know, they said that the Saginaw, uh, situation, it's the only state that doesn't recognize the provisional permit as setting the buffer. And I just, you know, I'm hopeful that maybe you can, you know, change the procedure or and I guess I understand that the ordinance is actually silent on this issue according to Jeff Schroeder over at Plunkett. And I was just hopeful that, that you guys can consider making a change so that we can, you know, build this beautiful building. And, you know, we think we, we deserve to be there first because we were first to apply and first to get our provisional use. And, um, I'd, we'd love to, to make an investment in your community, but if we have that whole investment at risk, we just can't move forward. And just really appreciate your, uh, consideration for, for this concern that we have. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Someone will get back to you and they will report to council as to what they have released to you, sir. So thank you so much.
I super appreciate it and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, you're quite welcome. Thank you for speaking. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Angie Miller.
Hi, um, my name is Angie Miller and I'm the President of the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council. Um, I'm here this evening to update you on a couple of events, um, that the delegates to the Labor Council have been working on. Um, in March, 300 families were served at a contactless food drive sponsored by UA-85. Um, and many of those families were from the City of Saginaw. And I would like to thank, uh, Mayor Moore for coming out and greeting those city residents. On April 22nd at eight o'clock, or excuse me, at 10 o'clock, a contactless food drive will be hosted by Launa, Local 1098. That's located at 345 East Morley Drive in Saginaw. This is a drive-through event, um, open to everyone and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. Lastly, uh, we have essential workers who have kept the City of Saginaw running, um, through this pandemic. And, you know, we know we've got, um, the grocery store attendants. We've got hard-working people that we might not even think about. Those that keep your power running or, um, keep your phones working or, you know, the other people that work at the hospitals, the nurses and doctors, of course, we think about, but we don't think about, you know, those individuals that clean the rooms or fix the food. All of these essential workers have been putting it on the line for us for over a year. So I would like to ask all the citizens of the city to please consider getting vaccinated. It not only helps to protect you and your family, but also all of those workers who have kept the city running. And please continue to wear your mask, um, whether you're vaccinated or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Council members, you have three minutes. You have three minutes to discuss what you'd like to discuss. Tonight, we will begin with Mr. Councilperson Flores.
Uh, thank you so much, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, I just want to reiterate what our public speaker had said. If you need a vaccination, I've been vaccinated myself, uh, with both Pfizer vaccinations, uh, last week. But if you have any questions in terms of the Saginaw County, please call 989-771-1010 uh, in order to get some more information on how to get vaccinated. Otherwise, I don't have too much. Uh, it was a good Easter, I had a good break. Um, it's good to see all of my members here. I'm the only person in the chamber, so it's a little bit odd. Uh, but at the same time, um, I hope everyone has a, had a good Easter. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you to our speakers tonight. I don't have too much to say. I would like to take this time and make a point of making sure to tell everyone, please have your vehicle registered. Uh, I understand going through the pandemic, it's very difficult to get to the Secretary of State, whatnot, but as of right now, there are so many vehicles within city limits in Saginaw County that are, uh, they're not licensed, they don't have, they're not displaying their license plate or a paper license on the vehicle. And the way people are driving, it's, it's going to be tough when accidents occur and then you, insurance comes into play, whatnot, but it's good for everyone to make sure that they're registered. Uh, please drive legally and safely. That's all that I have for this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Good evening, fellow council people and, uh, the city manager and, uh, everybody else on staff here. Good afternoon. Um, I really don't have a lot to say this evening myself. Um, I had both of my COVID shots. I'm, uh, feeling pretty good, I think, for today. Uh, I encourage everybody to go out and get their shots. Um, I am still, uh, con- constraining, concerned about the amount of violence that's going on in the City of Saginaw. Um, I know the people is probably doing the violence and not nowhere near hearing our voice. But, um, you know, maybe there's some things that we can do as a city council. You know, by getting engaged with the, uh, children, um, teenagers, young adults. You know, to teach them some responsibilities in, in the city and let them know, know how much they loved. And I know people feel bad and they do bad things, but we got to have some kind of way to show them that the life is not, um, some of those situations that they're going through only temporarily. Uh, when you're young, you have a tendency to don't realize that. And, uh, I think we have to remind our, uh, children all the time, you know, temporary situations. Uh, a lot of kids are not responsible for the predicament that they in. And, you know, we got to remind them that they can do better and they will do better if they just be patient and, and grow up and try their best to do the best they can in school. And, you know, that's a tough situation itself right now with schools concerned. But, uh, you know, other than that, man, I'm just praying for our city, uh, hoping we could do better. Uh, I'm going to personally, um, go out and pick up and start picking up some trash since I won't be here, uh, May the 15th, I'll be out of town. But I'm going to definitely get out and get near the fairgrounds and, uh, clean up around there. If anyone in the council people want to help me out in advance, I'd be more than happy to, uh, um, actually, I'm asking you to accompany me to do that. Uh, I'm sure my wife is probably going to help me out cleaning up that too. Even though she don't know it yet, I hope she lifts and watches. But, uh, uh, we're going to get up and clean up around the fairgrounds, you know, to make it beautify our city. So thank you very much for those comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Good evening, everyone. Um, I too will be brief because we definitely have a long, uh, agenda tonight. Um, but I do want to, um, say thank you to our public speakers, um, and definitely reiterate, um, uh, what Ms. Miller said about wearing our masks. It's still important whether we've got our vaccines or not. And, um, they are opening things up for 16 and older, so please get vaccinated. Um, I was able to receive my first vaccine, um, since we last met. And, um, I had maybe some mild side effects afterwards, but, uh, really nothing in comparison to how I felt when I, I'm fairly sure I had COVID early on. So, um, I would encourage anybody to do it. And I'm going back for my second one at the end of the month and I'm very happy, um, very grateful and very emotional, um, over the fact that I was finally able to get one. So, um, I'd encourage anybody else that it's, it's safe and you can do it too. Um, and just really quickly, I'd like to, um, congratulate the NAACP and the, uh, men of the Alpha Phi Alpha, uh, fraternity for putting on such a wonderful monthly meeting, um, panel that, um, covered a lot of good information on the new smart, um, justice legislation and also a lot of really good information about our newly, um, founded Saginaw Defender's Office and the really important resources that they're offering to people in our community. Um, and I just wanted to, uh, give a shout out to our Councilman Copeland for doing such a wonderful job with that. One of the facilitators there and he did a great job. Um, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that. And, um, if you have time and if it's of interest to you, make sure you find it on social media and to have been watching the meeting. Um, beyond that, I have nothing, um, else, so thank you and hope everyone as well.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Councilman Ostache.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a, uh, letter that I want to read here tonight. It's from the Women's National Farm and Garden Association. And this is in regards to their daffodils for Saginaw project. It says, "To the Honorable Mayor Brenda Moore, Mayor Pro Tem Michael Balls and all of the council members were all listed on here and the city manager. Motivated by our 90th birthday in 2019, inspired by the Belle Isle State Park Daffodil Movement and dedicated to our mission to beautifying our community, the Saginaw branch of the Women's National Farm and Garden has embarked on a five-year plan to put daffodils in public spaces in our county. The Saginaw branch planned 2,000 daffno, oh, excuse me, the branch planted 2,000 daffno bulbs and ballbets in the knoll between the Celebration Square Park and the historic Ben Foster House on October 10th of 2020. Our spirits are high that day, the weather was beautiful and we were reminded that often little things citizens do in good, in good and difficult times contribute to the overall well-being of our lives and those in our community. Uh, service, civic, civic service has been a driving force within our branch for 91 years. So, working with the award-winning expertise of the late Dr. John Reed of Niles, Michigan, and on his Oakwood farm, he has been growing and breeding, selling daffodils since, since 1980. Uh, he and his assistant, Julian Martin, worked with us to select these different varieties of hardy daffodil bulbs and variety of ballbets. We learned that the mature bulbs are about a nickel size and a ballbat is not developed yet. It will take one to three years to bloom and multiply. Each bulb will be, uh, as it propagates, eventually there will, uh, be thousands of more blooms on the site for everybody to enjoy. We want to acknowledge Mr. Phil Carwatt for his encouragement and assistance. We have, uh, ordered another 2,000 bulbs and are currently looking for the next public space to plant. Sincerely, Cindy Shantz and also from Susan Sontag, co-chairwomen of the Local Garden Farm and Association." So, uh, this is, uh, was kind of exciting project. I actually had been kind of working with this group and I was able to connect them uh, with Mr. Carwatt and our manager, uh, Tim Morales, for them to, uh, to do this project. And so now that, yes, they are looking for more spaces to, uh, to plant these daffodils for the city. Um, so that kind of goes along with our proclamation today. We have trees and flowers. So, one of the other things I want to say, and I've been hearing a lot of people talk about it, is trash. And I know, uh, Councilman Balls, you just mentioned it. Uh, we've been cleaning trash in the Cathedral District. I've probably, uh, gotten 20 to 25 bags already. We clean about a six, and we, that's about a six-square block area around the schools and stuff. So, a lot of it blew from the wintertime and of course, uh, we do get other trash that comes along. But, um, some of the complaints that I'm getting is even down in Ojiboy Island. Please pick up, you know, and put it in the trash receptacles where our city staff will then go around and pick it up. I know Old Town, um, they do a good job down there. You know, the streets are pretty clean, uh, but, uh, it is something that you do see where you have somebody having lunch or whatever and they drive away and there's the fast-food service bag. So, uh, please, we need your help to keep our city looking beautiful. And I also too, um, have been fully vaccinated. I'm, I'm doing pretty good and I encourage others as well. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to just say thank you and, um, welcome to our public speakers and anybody watching at home on YouTube or HGTV. We truly appreciate you. Um, I don't want to linger, uh, in my comments tonight, but I appreciate the, uh, proclamation on Arbor Day. I am truly going to miss again the Green Team's annual celebration in city council chambers. Um, but we can all do our part. If you see a piece of trash, pick it up. If you see somebody dumping illegally in our city, report it. Um, and we can all make our land, our city, a more beautiful place, one step at a time. I also want to just share that, uh, there are still families in need of food. So just, um, uh, I know one of our guests, uh, public speakers shared that there are food giveaways going on, but there are also continuous food giveaways taking place. Uh, Mount Al gives away food every Monday, um, between 11 and I think 5. I could be wrong on that, but, um, any council members, if you know of stuff, please share it because we have a lot of families who are still struggling. And then lastly, um, even though our numbers are spiking and things are, uh, moving along with the vaccinations, please stay safe, please wear a mask. And if you can, grab a youth and mentor them. We need some, uh, guidance in our city right now, so, um, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, also thank you to our public speakers. Uh, my first want to start off with my prayers and condolences to the family of Dante Wright. Um, I also want to share, um, now that we are looking at the anniversary of the, of COVID-19, um, we have a lot of families who are, um, dealing with their first, with their first year of losing that, uh, loved one. Um, so I'm encouraging anyone who is dealing with grief or has had suicidal thoughts, um, having, just, um, it is hard, especially for myself dealing with that, um, as that holiday comes around, that date comes around, um, of remembering their passing. So if you need some assistance, contact the Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority at 989-797-3400. Your mental health is very important. Um, and then also, if you are in need of rental assistance, Saginaw, you know, County United Way still has funding available. Um, so we saw that the federal, um, the federal, there was a federal extension for the, um, rent, the rent. But also, um, if you still need assistance, this is an opportunity to take use of those resources. So give a call to 211 and they'll be able to direct you on where you should go. Um, thank you to our public speakers, um, this evening. Um, also, I don't even know, I was, I kept thinking about our meetings, but I do want to give another shout out to Mayor Moore, Commissioner Matthews and Charlie Cadet, um, who put on that Easter basket giveaway and with all of those children. And shout out to my fellow council members who were there. Um, it was a good laugh, good time, just seeing so many people who were just excited, having a good time. And even shout out to Ty Rogers who was out there, who recently just won the state championship. Uh, and he's our own, he's Saginaw's own. So, um, it was a great opportunity. And so finally, um, PCI and First Ward, they are, still have space for seniors. So if you know any seniors, 55 and older, they are providing food every day, um, for seniors. They're giving, they're, um, having deliveries to seniors. Um, if you know of anyone who's over the age of 55 and they just need some assistance, please give First Ward, um, Community Center a call. Um, and that's all I have. Good seeing everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Silvers. Sylvia. I got it right, Sylvia.
Okay, don't let that be part of my minutes, me laughing. Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, um, I thank the speakers for, uh, coming to, uh, city council and voicing their opinion. I just have a couple of quick things. Um, I just want to give a shout out to, um, the legal services of Eastern Michigan. They're doing a fantastic job during the pandemic and even before that. Um, they are available. Something happened to my screen, I don't know if you guys can hear me. Uh, they're, they're doing a fantastic job in the city. Uh, and their number is 800-322-4512. And a, another number, I'm trying to bring myself back, you guys, I'm very sorry. Um, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, the intake line is 800-322-4512. And their statewide number is 888-783-8190. And also I'd like, uh, to give a shout out, uh, to Jermaine Franklin, who's getting ready to be heavyweight, he's from, uh, boxing. He's from Saginaw, Michigan, one of our own, born and raised. He's going to be fighting, uh, April 24th in New York. So you guys keep him in prayer. And he's also my nephew. And, uh, I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, it is, it is always a pleasure to see and for people to see and talk and especially my fellow council persons, when we share what we share. I know that we'll continue to do what we're doing. Mine's just going to be short and brief. I'd like to thank all of the speakers for speaking. And Mr. Leek, Mr. Meek, I'm sorry, you're right. I started off joking so we can set the pace, so that we can make our meetings fun and exciting for the community as they listen to us share. On May the 15th, we are trying to pull, we're not trying, we're going to have a citywide cleanup. I'm asking all council persons to be present if they can. Key word, if you can. On May the 20th, Saginaw, I mean, I'm sorry, Food Bank has, has approached me from Flint, Bay City area, along with United Way. We're going to do a food distribution at Hoyt Park starting at 10 a.m. I'm asking that we all come out and support that as well. We're in the midst of a pandemic and just like my fellow council persons have expressed, we still have people in need of things. And so what we want to do is we really want to share some of our blessings with other people. My mother always says, "It's good to be a blessing to others sometimes." On April the 24th at 10 a.m., SBIC Marketplace is having their thinking spring. They're having a big, a big, big gala event, which is next Saturday, I think it is. And our coupon ambassador will be there and she will be highlighting her things and you can get stuff at a reasonable discount price. So if you're, if you don't have anything to do on April the 24th, please come out and share. At SBIC Marketplace, starting at 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., they will be having a big gala event. I think I covered everything that I was supposed to do. And with that, we will move right into the manager's report. Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the manager.
Thank you. So, um, the mayor did ask me this morning about the, um, strategic planning session, which we usually do in January. And we've delayed that and I think, um, what we're going to do, it usually, uh, for finding locations and getting, uh, everything planned, it usually takes us a few months to do that. So we're, we're just thinking about different, uh, items that we can present and different things that we can do for the planning session. We'll still have to, um, try to get a location and everything when the time comes. But we're going to be watching, um, the numbers and also the state of emergency that was declared. But we're going to be watching um the numbers and also the state of emergency that was declared uh by the Saginaw County Board of Commissioners. So we won't be planning to have any event like that until that um state of emergency clears, which right now is at the end of August. Um, so we're probably looking at the fall for for that uh planning session and um we'll go, we'll go with uh more ideas about what to do with that once we get closer to that time. The uh Office of Management and Budget Director, Yolanda Jones and her staff, uh continue to work diligently on the city's FY twenty twenty-one and twenty-two budget. They've made a lot of progress and I know we're going to get the budget to council on time this year, once again. Uh, since we're uh meeting virtually now and I expect um that you all will have more discussion on that when we get further into the meeting. Um, but we do plan to record the budget presentations like we did last year. And we'll make those recordings available to council members and the public uh prior to any scheduled public hearings or budget discussion from council. In the same manner, we'll, we'll uh provide links to those and post them. And uh council members can view them in the public as well. And then uh you'll have the time in between to contact us, to ask questions. And then uh the OMB, a few of the staff members, Ms. Jones and uh probably Brian Weiss will be available at a meeting uh to provide additional information and answer any questions. Just for information purposes, uh the budget must be provided to council by April twenty-sixth and must be approved by council thirty days prior to the start of the fiscal year. Uh, so that would be May thirty-first. Uh, also an update on uh the American Recovery Act. We are still um awaiting guidance from the US Department of Treasury regarding the improved uses for those funds. Uh, I think we're probably still a few weeks out on getting that guidance as they work through the legislation. And um, it, it, I didn't wanna uh provide you too much or go through too many items because we do have two presentations this evening. And I know uh council members uh usually look forward to these items. And uh some time ago, the engineering department started providing an annual update on public services projects to council. And we believe this is uh very helpful as it provides detailed information to the public, but also to council members. Because we know that you all receive questions quite frequently from constituents and in your neighborhood about different projects that are ongoing or projects that just were completed or what's coming up. Uh, what's gonna be coming up that the city will be working on and streets are um other infrastructure. So um, we do have a presentation this evening. The first one is from uh city engineer Louis Taylor and assistant city engineer Travis Hare, and they're going to provide uh an update on engineering projects, specifically the twenty twenty-one construction season. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Louis and uh you should have a copy of the presentation and I believe they'll also be sharing the screen.
Thank you, city manager. My name is Louis Taylor. As uh the manager said, I'm accompanied here by Travis Hare, the assistant city engineer. I assure you, he is here. He's six foot away, maintaining social distance. Um, I have a quick presentation. I'd like to share my screen. Uh, I'll go through this. I'll try not to take up too much time. And um, a lot of this material, like the manager said, is in your, in your packet. And uh I'll just briefly go over some of these slides. And then concentrate mainly on the construction uh for this year. This uh, this is just an outline of what's in the presentation, the accomplishments, uh the road revenues and upcoming construction. That's what I'd kinda like to uh concentrate my energies on for tonight. Some of the accomplishments, I'll go over them uh fairly quickly. One of the things that we've accomplished last year is we had a sidewalk program. In addition, there's another contract let with the ADA, which we were able to cover um forty-four locations. And um, six intersections for the ADA ramp. And then um, we spent approximately um, probably about two hundred thousand dollars between the two programs. Uh, we did three railroad crossings. Um, the assistant senior Travis Hare worked very digital diligently with the Huron and Eastern to actually just um work the administration of the city's portion into the contract with uh Huron Eastern's contract for their work. And what they did is uh reduced our administrative costs, reduced uh second mobilization for a second contractor. And it saved the city over twenty-five thousand dollars just in those three crossings. Um, Niagara is a total reconstruct of a major street. It is approximately a half mile long and about one point five million dollars. Harden was a local street, about two point two miles and approximately six hundred thou- six hundred thousand dollars. Um, some of the resurfacing, the Cape seal and the mill and resurface. The Cape seal, we did six point four uh lane miles in four locations. We did uh nine point three lane miles, a mill and resurface at eight locations for a total of fifteen point seven miles and approximately one point two million dollars with the work. Oops, sorry. Um, one of the bridge rehabs we had was Norman Street. It was closed, if you remember, um, early in the season last year. Um, we managed to do uh steel beam repairs and replace the deck. And um, that bridge is now open and that was just under a million dollars for that work. This is a little bit about the revenue. If you notice that um, we, it shows a trend of going up. In two thousand fifteen, there was an infrastructure bill for a steady increase. That ended in twenty twenty-one, so eight point two million dollars is roughly, um, we're gonna plateau there depending on what the revenues do off of Act fifty-one. Depending on how the gas and weight tax with COVID may affect uh how much revenue is brought in. So we're hoping to stay or maintain at least that amount, uh find other funding. Of course, we'll always uh look for it. This is showing some of the federal STU L funds. Um, we got one point seven million dollars. Um, we're using all of that on uh our Mackinac Street this year. Um, of that, if you know it, on the bottom, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars was uh HIP funds, both uh COVID and regular HIP funds used towards that project to offset the city's cost in that project. This is showing some CDBG funds that we received, which is gonna be used on our LaPierce Street project in twenty twenty-one for three hundred thousand dollars. And this is showing the trend of the funds that we've uh gained throughout the years. Um, this is just a little bit of a breakdown, what type of funding throughout those years that was in that previous slide. Just showing you where the monies were coming from for each one of those years. Uh, people ask, you know, how do we select projects? And I promise you, we don't throw the street names in a hat, shake it and pull them out. There is a process. We um, the left side is pretty clear and straightforward as far as the engineering practices that we use. The only thing that's uh not straightforward is the PESR rating. That is um something that is kinda hard for people to understand, but it's an engineering uh ra- rating on the roads. You have to be certified to conduct the ratings. And um, as you see, there's the ratings from poor, fair and good, which determine the type of fix that we use on, on the roads that we select. Um, this is the snapshot. Each one of these bullet points has a slide on its own for the upcoming construction season. Um, our ADA sidewalk and sidewalk ramps, um, this year it's real quick. Um, we chose instead of letting this as two separate projects, we're gonna do it as one project. By doing that, we're, we're minimizing the amount of administrative costs by the city as well as reducing um the idea of having two separate mobilizations for each contract. Um, so by being in one and we looked at the bids coming back and we increased the size a little bit, we got an economy of scale going. We saved over fifty thousand dollars this year by putting those two together. Um, the locations are citywide and it vary on the complaint list. Right now, this year, when we complete this, we'll take us through the two thousand seventeen complaint list. The contractor is J and N Concrete. Uh, we're gonna start mid, mid-April and we uh hope to be completed by early July. Uh, the budget for this year is uh two hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. And you see the breakdown in funding between Act fifty-one major, local and general funds. The two thousand twenty-one mill and surface, um, what quantifies a mill and surface usually is somewhere between an inch and a half and three inches of where we grind up uh that thickness of the surface of the road and then we put down new asphalt on top of it. Uh, right now is for the season where it stands, we're gonna do North Carolina, Fordney and Hess. And it's proposed to start in um, early July and be completed in late August. And right now we're budgeting uh four hundred and seventy-five thousand. We're hoping to capture some more funds if we can to expand that program. That's a really good program for us to get in and hit some of these problem roads. Mackinac Street uh with water main replacement from Alexander to Hamilton is roughly point nine miles of HMA, um, curb and gutter sidewalk ramps. Um, we're gonna do most of the water main and sanitary sewer installations. We're gonna minimize the amount of blind taps in our sewer, which is uh maintenance nightmare uh for um coming back and making cuts into the road. Uh, we don't like to cut into brand new roads. We try and do complete streets when we go through here and take care of all the water and sewer that needs to be taken care of prior to putting a new surface down. The contractor this year for Mackinac is Fessler Bowman. It's scheduled to start early uh May and they have opened the traffic by the end of October. It's a three point four million dollar um project with half the funds coming from the city, roughly one point seven million dollars, which is out of our Act fifty-one sewer and water funds. And as I mentioned earlier, um, we got some HIP funds and STU L funds that make up the other half. Um, Baum Street reconstruction is roughly a one block between Hoyt and Thompson. Um, it's a reconstruct uh with water main replacement. And as Mackinaw, we're gonna replace any ADA ramps too as well. I think I forgot to mention that in sidewalk. But Baum here too, we're gonna take care of those things right while we're doing it. Uh, the contractor is Roadie Brothers, um, as we're gonna start early May and be open to traffic in early July. Uh, it's roughly three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and um it's all city funds. Seventeenth Street is a partial water main and sewer replacement and rehabilitation. It's gonna be a mill and cer- mill and resurface. For the bulk of the project, there's um, the bulk of the intersections are concrete and they need to be reconstructed. When we do that, we're gonna remove the water main and sewer that needs to be removed and replace it with newer infrastructure. And we do that to the outside limits of the side streets so that if we ever have to do work on the side streets, that we're not uh disturbing our newly resurfaced road. The bid letting for this, this is gonna be at end of April. Uh, we're looking at starting in mid-May and having it open to traffic by late August. The cost on this is nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, with two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars being CDBG. And the remainder of the funds coming from Act fifty-one water and sewer. The concrete um street or the center street uh bridge repair. This is kind of what we call capital preventive maintenance. There's some deck patches, epoxy overlay, expansion joints and surface sealers on the piers. Um, the contractor for this is C A Hall. We're gonna start early May and complete on uh mid-August. The budget is three hundred and eighty-five thousand uh with um eighty-four thousands um being city funds and the remainder being state and federal funds. This is the typical repairs that we do to uh use as preventative maintenance on our structures. Um, this is slide is just to give you a breakdown of how we um, our projects overall are funded. About thirty-nine percent is uh non-city funds and uh sixty-one percent being city funds. That's a pretty good ratio to have. We always strive to uh make that non-city portion bigger and uh we'll continue to do so. Other construction, we have Baum Street Parking Lot. Um, we're, this is pending funding for this. We're looking at uh constructing a new surface lot. Uh, proposed bid letting is to be determined. We're hoping to start in mid-July and be completed by mid-November. And the estimated cost is so approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, with that, that kinda concludes my um presentation. If there's any questions, I can take them at this time.
Council persons, do we have any questions?
I just had a couple real quick here. I'm sorry, I'm gonna flip this over. Sorry. Nope, sorry. Yeah.
You're upside down. Now you're right.
I'm sorry. Okay, great. So when we, when this was all planned, uh, when was the beginning of the planning for this construction?
Um, is, is it relates to which part, I guess. The planning starts early on. We, we plan out seven years, our projects. So we start making our selection and we narrow it down based on funding condition and those other criteria that are on that, that slide that we show for project selection. And um, as funding comes to uh be solidified, then we actually select the project. But if, for example, our milling fill, we would love to add some more streets on that, but until funding, more funding becomes available, we cannot add the ones that we wanted to do back on there. So, so it starts quite early on. It's, it's not something that we do just, you know, coming up to the season.
Yeah, correct. And so you had already talked with M Dot about transportation funding for this. And that's where you had gotten the, what, forty-nine percent of the additional?
Partially, yes. Yep. Uh, some are grants that we apply for and then we are uh part of an MPO, which SADA, um, which we, we obtain funding through there as well, which is state funds.
Okay. Is there any additional uh funding that could possibly be given by the American Jobs Plan? If it does pass within these next couple of months, or is that just something that?
No, we're keeping our eye, we're keeping our eye very closely glued to that. We are hoping that some funds shake loose. Um, we're in contact with the DOT. Um, I have a lot of good contacts there with the DOT yet. And um, and if anything comes of it, we'll be all over it, for sure.
Great. Cool. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Copeland, I think you had a question. I can't really see 'cause you're all up on top now.
I did, I did.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Taylor. Um, with the sidewalk program, I saw that um you didn't mention that a lot of it, a portion of it comes from the complaints. Um, so is this, morsels, do they complain to the engineering department, to your department? Or is this another department that they submit a formal complaint to regarding to the road?
I, I, the way I understand, no matter where the complaint goes to, it comes to us eventually. So, and then it gets put on the list. Um, we had a quite an extensive list. We're making pretty good ground on it. To get all the way through two thousand seventeen, I, I was pretty ecstatic to get that far this year. Um, so hopefully in short order, we'll be caught up. And then um, maybe the program wouldn't be so extensive every year. Maybe we can just get in maintain mode, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
I have a couple of questions too, if you have time.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm trying to, I'm trying to scroll through, so I got you, Mayor Potem.
Okay, I was trying to unmute. Woo. I'm learning a lot with this. But anyway, thank you for your uh presentation, Mr. Taylor. I have a lot of questions and I will be contacting you at the number on the screen. But one of my questions I'd like to ask now, kinda piggyback on uh Councilman Copeland. So if persons don't complain, 'cause I, I'm noticing um some of the areas that um are being repaired versus some of the areas that are not being repaired, uh namely the east side, south side, north side of Saginaw. versus some of the areas that are not being repaired, namely the east side, south side, north side of Saginaw. So one, one of my questions would be, is that the, when I seen you had a list, but for persons to go in by yourself or your people that work for you, how do they know if, if a person doesn't make complaint that this street needs help or this area needs help? Because some of it, you could just drive through it or look at it and you know it needs help.
Good point. There's a lot of it that needs help, but basically the way, the way it's handled is basically truly on a complaint, whether it be from the property owner themselves, the sidewalk in front of them, or somebody in the neighborhood walking along and tripping on it and saying it's a complaint. So when we go in and repair it though, there might be the odd chance that somebody didn't complain about it on a piece of sidewalk if it is adjacent to a property that does have a complaint. So if we have to repair the complaints property and it extends for us to get over to fix it into the adjacent property, then there's a good chance that we would have to go over there without a complaint notice per se in front of that house. But that doesn't happen very often, but it does happen, so. But basically, right now, we're strictly on a complaint order. We take them by year and we come up the list as we're going, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna be writing a lot of stuff down. Thank you very much.
Look forward to hearing from you.
All right.
Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, would you, would you finish, sweetie? Okay, Mayor, Mayor Protem Balls.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your report and thank you, Mr. Timothy Morales, for allowing him to give us the report. I understand that the funds used come from the Act fifty-one, is that true?
Some of the funds, yes, they come from, the Act fifty-one is sometimes known as the gas and weight tax, correct.
So for the sidewalks and stuff, using money from the Act fifty-one and what else?
We get some funds from general fund, but the cost of the sidewalk is assessed towards the property owner. So those funds eventually come back to the city. Per, per the ordinance, yes.
Also, all the sidewalk work will be taxed to the people living in the houses, huh?
For the sidewalk, not the ADA ramps.
Okay, okay, they be, okay, okay. So is, these funds are mixed with what type of funds to get the work done? Is any?
We actually upfront it with Act fifty-one and general funds. Some of the funds were required to spend a certain percentage on non-motorized, which can come out of Act fifty-one, so some of the funds are from Act fifty-one. But that's usually on our construction jobs, not on these, these calling complaints.
So the two hundred thousand dollars that we spending to get the ADA ramps and the sidewalks done, all that is ADA funds and general funds money?
Yes, it would be Act fifty-one and general funds money, correct.
When do we get federal funds to fix roads or sidewalks, or do we?
Yeah, we get federal funds on a regular basis. We get STU, STUL funds, CDBG funds and HIP funds. They're all state and federal ta- funds that we use.
And you use those to fix what with?
Roads for our construction of our roads, paths, it can be for roads, bridges, paths. We do non-motorized. We have to spend what percentage of? One, one percent of our Act fifty-one funds on non-motorized.
I would, I would just like to know, you know, when we get federal monies here to fix roads, I would like to know, 'cause we had contractors in the city who normally don't get the work. And I understand that the federal funds do help out local contractors, give some of the work where they get some set of size for them. And I would like to know when that happens, if possible. You know, and I'd like to know how much money we spending on these roads, you know, to see if we can get some local contractors to do some of the work. It's always good to see local contractors from our city getting to work because they employ people to live in our city. And it's not just a power grab with people that's coming in and taking our money and it's going right back out to city. You know, we can build homegrown people to make the roads and hire our people. It's a win-win for the city of Saginaw if that dollar gets spent more than one time instead of just leaving as soon as it's spent.
Agreed.
So as a city council person, I like to know when those federal funds are coming in so that we can try to get people to do that work here in our city.
I can do that.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Taylor, I'd like to thank you for your overview. It's always exciting to hear what's up next with the roads so that when citizens ask us questions, we can answer. I just need some clarity. If and when you fix sidewalks, is there option or it's just automatically? If there's a complaint about a sidewalk, can you repair the sidewalk and actually, do you, do you contact the homeowner to say that, hey, you gotta fix the sidewalks, how much time do they have? And how much is it per square to replace them? If you replace them, is this a bigoted, a standard figure? I guess I'm asking a lot of questions all in one.
Well, for, for starters, the property owner is notified shortly after the complaint comes in. And it's obviously, I mean, we're just, we're just getting to two thousand seventeen, so it's been a while. So thirty days minimum prior to us coming in and doing the work for them, they're sent a letter notifying them that the work is gonna be done and they have the option of repairing it themselves or we will repair it for them. And then they have the option, if we do it for them, of either paying it upfront or having it assessed on their taxes. So they're, they're well aware of the work that has to be done and the estimated cost that it's gonna take to do it prior to the work being done, so.
So how much, do you have a general ballpoint? Like, for example, I, I know that in my neighborhood, my neighbor called and she had a tree that was uprooted, which was the city's tree, but the sidewalk has to be repaired. I bought half of the lot. Well, I've got one square of my half a lot that needs to be repaired. And so I guess I'm asking how much, do we have a general ballpoint figure or how much it normally costs or not?
Well, I mean, I, I could throw a number out there, but it'd only be valid for, for the moment. It depends on each, each contract that we let. And for me to sit and give you a number that's a ballpark figure, could be right on or it could be way off. And if you wanna know those numbers, I'd be glad to give them to you for what we have.
No, 'cause I'm, no, I'm not trying to get y'all back out here. I won't talk about it, checking those sidewalks. Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, because I've been asked that question several times about if my, if the city comes to repairs my sidewalks and I don't have the money right then, does all of that go on my taxes for that year? Or is there like a separate thing where I can pay it off? That, I guess that's my question.
It's a five, five years? I think it's five years it's assessed on, on the property taxes.
So you divide it up by five?
Yeah, yeah.
So that means it's a lot of money, I'm just playing. Okay, any other, any other questions?
I just have to make one really, one quick comment. I guess for the federally and state-funded projects, we don't control the letting through Saginaw. That goes through Lansing for MDOT. So that criteria is set by the states and the feds, so.
Yep. I, I was gonna mention that too, that the city does not bid federal and state dollars. So when those come in, those are bid at the state level. So we don't control who gets those jobs. And I also wanted to mention that the sidewalk, it's been talked about, so the sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowner. And that's not just a Saginaw ordinance. It is an ordinance in Saginaw, however, that is very common for cities in Michigan, that the homeowner is responsible. And I can tell you that in some cities, they actually do an audit, I think, every five years on all the sidewalks and require the homeowners to repair them. Or, or the city will repair them and then and then charge it back, but we don't, we handle it on a complaint basis, as Mr. Taylor mentioned. And they are getting caught up on that. Additionally, the block grant funds that we have been getting, we've also, I believe those have been going towards streets for most projects. And I really will commend the city engineer's office. They've been doing this for a number of years. I think there were some questions about the planning process earlier following Mr. Taylor's presentation. But they, they have it down to a science on planning these projects and it is severely limited by our, our level of funding. However, when we do get funding, when new funding comes out, even at the last minute, the city engineer has projects that are waiting and they can move forward. I've, I've seen this before. When Beth Bundan was our city engineer, we would receive some additional state dollars at the end of the funding period and, and we always have projects that can fit into whatever funding level they give us. The engineering department knows exactly what their projects are estimated to cost, which ones are in line and what they can move forward with. So they do a really good job with that, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Yeah, just on the basis of what the manager just said, the, the reason why I had asked what type of planning went into this on top of looking into what the American Jobs Plan would be able to give the city, are we talking about possibly looking at putting some funds into this? Or just looking at something like the manager said of the plans in the future for other reconstruction or infrastructure?
So I, I haven't seen what's included in, in the planning for the American Jobs Act. And as they talk about that, you know, things change so frequently with those, with those programs. The, the current program, the Recovery Act, I don't believe we're allowed to use any of those funds for streets. We could use them for water and sewer infrastructure, which is a possibility, but we'll know more as we move into planning. I believe in our discussion that the mayor and I had with Congressman Kildee's office, I believe they did say that, that these weren't for streets. And that, that becomes the issue when we're trying to do water and sewer. As Mr. Taylor mentioned, we don't wanna cut into good streets to do water and sewer projects. So we try to coordinate those. But hopefully, if we move, if we move forward with this American Jobs Act and there is money for streets funding, that will allow us to coordinate. If we do use some of the Recovery Act funds for water, we could coordinate those. Cause that, that's the best, best way to plan those, the street projects so that, you know, you don't put down a new street and then have a water main break and then you have to cut up the new street in several parts. So it's a, it, it's a pretty involved process. But I, I can tell you, Councilman, that if, if Louis got notice that he was getting a million dollars from that act, he's gonna be able to spend it pretty quick.
Yeah, okay. That's my only question. All right, all right, thank you.
Now, one of the things for our new, our new council persons, I know that when I first came on, that was the very first thing that citizens asked me a lot about. When you gonna fix these roads? And then the more I said, the more we began to talk about it and the more we began to understand. So I, I'm just saying that a lot of stuff is real foreign and it's still foreign to me as well. And so by our city manager giving us the opportunity to hear it, I think it even helps educate the citizens. Cause I know my phone has been ringing about these sidewalks. And so I'm hoping that everybody understands, 'cause I, I didn't know that the bill actually got charged to us. For some reason, I thought if it was the city tree and it tore my street up, my sidewalk up, you fixed it. But that's not true, so. You know, a lot of times when we get to these presentations, it's not only for our citizens, but it's also for us so that we got clarity. So, good questions, good questions. Do we have any more questions of Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor, once again, thank you so much for your presentations. You've been quite educational.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you will be getting some, some phone calls.
And I look forward to it.
Questions. And we, we just appreciate you taking out your time, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
You as well. And we are back in the hands of our city manager again.
Okay, and we thank you to Louis and his team for putting that together for us. And I think we can bring more things in the future, Mayor. And possibly, I, I know there's questions, probably more questions about how does the funding work and where does it come from? And maybe that's something we can potentially include in the strategic planning session as we, as we try to put those topics together for this fall. So I know you're all interested in the lead service line replacement program that we've been working on for some time. And Paul Reich, who is our director for water and wastewater treatment, asked to have this presentation added for the meeting. And I think it will be a good overview for council and the public. And again, Paul has been working on this project since the beginning. So if you all have questions that, that go even beyond this presentation, I know Paul has the answers for you. So with that, I'll turn it over and welcome Paul to the council meeting.
Thank you, manager. Hopefully you can all hear me and can also see my screen. I'm working from my iPad because my laptop has had some technical issues. So Mayor Moore, could you tell me if you can see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, I can see it, Mr. Paul.
All right, good. All right, good, good evening, everyone. Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem Balls, council members and staff, as well as our residents. This presentation is to give you a little update on some water grants that I've been working toward. DWS, or AFSTANS, or Drinking Water Sewer Revolving Loan Fund that are available from the state of Michigan. And back in the summer of two thousand twenty, the governor had announced these My Clean Waters fundings that were available. And some of them are for disadvantaged community, which Saginaw is one of. So just to give a quick overview for all of you and particularly for the new members, due to two thousand eighteen revisions to the Michigan Clean Water Act, we have to replace service lines within our water system that are either lead or lead-containing. And by that, we're talking about actual lead or galvanized lines that may collect lead ions or particulates of lead inside the galvanized line. So you can see here in this picture that there are two portions to the service line. There's what we call the connection that goes between the water main and the curb stopper, water shut-off. Sometimes it's referred to as a water shut-off near your property boundary. And then there's another section of line that's typically the homeowner's responsibility between that shut-off box and into the home, which we are also replacing as part of the Michigan Clean Water Act for lead and copper rule. So just some estimates, there's about thirty-four thousand service lines in the city. I don't have it on here, but there's eighteen or nineteen thousand currently in service. We expect that there's around twelve thousand or more lead service lines and/or galvanized lines in the, in the system that need to be replaced. We expect it to take twenty to twenty-five years to complete all the replacements. And we'll be making a much more detailed progress presentation at our next meeting on how we're doing. on how we're doing, what we've gotten done to date and so on. This next slide, just, and I've shown this slide before, but it just gives you some idea of the process that's used. We have, we pull lines in, and what you're seeing here is actually the backhoe is pulling existing line out and new line in at the same time. This next slide is really from a presentation we made back when the rate study was shared with the council in August of 2019 and was approved. But if you look at this, this is based on a five inches, five eighths inch meter and an average use of 6,000 gallons per month for a customer. What we had done is we determined that we thought we could save our customers money by adding staff and equipment to do the work ourselves. And then we also decided that we wanted to cash finance this work so that we wouldn't be using up our bonding capacity that we need to be able to do other work that's needed, which you'll be hearing about soon and a part of that bond issuance is for, such as improvements to the water treatment plant and water main work, things like that. So if you look at the red lines, if you can see that, it's $3.09 in 2020. Then it goes up in 21 to $6.53 a month, and then in 2022, $6.91 a month. And it's not that these flat line fees are going to go away, but we'll move on here to talk about the Mine Clean Water Grants and how they might help us. It's my thought that if we are able to obtain some of these grant funds and our principal forgiveness funds that are available, that it would save us quite a bit of money and would potentially either do one of two things. Either reduce the need of raising that flat service fee and/or shorten it, one of the two of those. So Eagle announced again these grants in summer of 2020. We applied for Drinking Water Asset Management Grant in the amount of a million dollars, but it doesn't look like we're going to be funded for that. When I saw the rankings, we were significantly down the list as far as being funded for the Drinking Water Asset Management Grant. And what we were going to use that funding for is to help us with our verifications of line materials. Part of the rule requires that we do verifications of materials and we were hoping to use it for that. But I'm, I'm not disappointed too much in that. It'd be nice to get the million dollars, of course. But we did receive $963,000 as a pilot grant that helped us develop our asset management program, lead service line replacement program, as well as the methods we're using for verifications. So we did receive money in this area before. The one that I really want to share with you that I think is important is the disadvantaged community lead service line replacement principal forgiveness loan. And in essence, a principal forgiveness loan runs it through their loan program, the Drinking Water and Sewer Revolving Loan Funds. But with principal forgiveness, it's not going to cost us more money. It's going to actually end up giving us money. Based on Saginaw's population and what's eligible within this grant, we're eligible for approximately $5 million and we're hopeful to obtain that. We did submit an intent to apply in early 2021, but now we are nearing the process to start the applications. And I wanted to make you all aware of what this is and what, what we're doing. This will be on the agenda next time as well. And it, it'll be in the form of asking you to approve the schedule of a public hearing. One of the things in the process is we have to make our plan public, but first there has to be a public hearing. And then we post the, the plan within the clerk's or the manager's office for 30 days. And the process then goes on from there. The intention would be for us to actually have the implication process complete and submitted to the state by the beginning of July. And then we should have an understanding of whether or not we've received those funds by September. So, but it does require that we have a public hearing and that we also make the, this whole process public. So with that, if I have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question. I mean, does any other council member have a question? I don't want to be first. Anybody else got anything they want to ask Mr. Paul?
Yes, I do. I have two quick questions. The first question is, I had received some information in the mail regarding a possible lead in my water. Is that regarding the lead replacement program? And I'm going to apologize because I read it, but I didn't read too much into it. Would that have been a part of your process?
I think what you might be referring to is a mailing that went out a little over a year ago, around January. That mailing went to all customers of the city. And it effectively just let the city customers be aware that there are lead lines within the city and that they should take certain precautions to make sure that, you know, the water that they're receiving is, is safe to drink. And there should have been instruction related to that on, on what you should do.
There was. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know if that was a part of this whole process. So we're eventually going to get to those 12,000 or more lead pipes 20 to 25 years down the road.
Yeah, it actually, I'm sorry.
Is that if we get this funding, that that's going to happen or it's going to happen regardless?
Oh, it'll happen regardless because it's required by law.
Okay.
I'm just hopeful that we get the, the funding that will help us make it cheaper for ourselves.
I hope so too. Thank you.
Mr. Paul, the letter that Mr. Copeland, I think is talking about, I got one, probably within the last 30 days. And he was just telling us that they were coming out to inspect our, to inspect our lines to see if they needed to be changed over. Is that the same one, Mr. Copeland? Cause we just got it not too long ago.
Yeah, I got one a year ago and then there was another one that came out.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, what you're referring to, Mayor Moore, is the, that would be a notification that we're coming to verify the material on a given line. So that's what that particular communication would have been about.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I got a question too, sir. So we, we're doing all the work in-house. Is that correct?
Well, if we get this grant funding, that will be done by contractors. We will do bids for contractors to do that additional work because it'll help us get done in the 20 to 25 year timeframe that we're looking for. And there's only so much that we can coordinate effectively and get done. The funding has to be spent within a three-year timeframe. So we want to make sure that, that we get this funding properly applied and, and used in the city. So the $5 million would not be, but everything else is, we are self-funding with our own staff and our own equipment.
So how, how many employees do you have? And where did you get them from? I mean, to get that crew together, you had to take some people from out of some other spots. Did people retire? Or how did you end up getting the people to do the work?
Well, that, there's multiple facets to that. As you, you are aware, our water and sewer department are combined for the maintenance division. So there are people that work in both sides. And that's one of the advantages of the staffing that we have, is that our people are trained to do both, both sides of water and sewer. And we have been training existing staff as well as hiring staff over the last couple of years and buying equipment, as you've been approving over the last couple of years. I know we had a little bit of trouble hiring some staff the last year, especially because of the pandemic. It's been a lot slower getting staff in place. But we've really used the combination of, of approaches to get things going and get staff going on it. Hopefully that answers your question adequately.
It does.
Thing is, now, I, I, I ride in the city a lot. I see a lot of, I've been seeing the guys do the work. Sometime I wonder what they doing, because I say, man, they been out here for three days in the same spot. You know, so I would imagine that the consumers got to come out or something. I don't know what's all going on. But.
The reason that that can take so much time is sometimes we can get a line done in three, four hours. You know, especially if it's fairly straightforward and, and not complicated. But in other cases, if you've got a lot of obstructions in the way, such as trees, sidewalk, driveway. As you mentioned, if there happens to be gas lines in the way, things like that can really slow us down.
Wow, okay. And another thing, I don't, I don't know who doing the hiring out there, but I have not seen one minority on those jobs. And that, and that bothers me. I mean, for the city of Saginaw to have everybody doing the work. I mean, people have people that look like the people in the city doing some of the work. Ain't no way we can make these kids feel good about their fathers that stay out there doing that work too, you know? So maybe you can answer that.
Well, I mean, we, we do not, we do not, what would I say? We don't discriminate in terms of deciding to hire or not hire based on color in any way. The applicants that we receive aren't always as many, but we definitely have minority folks in our staff. You may not have seen them, but we have a number of minorities that work for us. And I would, I would be ashamed if we were somehow not hiring people just because of color. I can tell you that.
Okay. Well, I know you probably don't do it, but sometimes things happen. You know what I'm saying? I don't know what's happening, but it sure would be nice to see some guys out there. I'd be looking again. You know, the people in the city are paying the tax dollars to get this done. And I would like to see some of the people in the city doing the work sometime, you know? I mean, you can imagine how other municipalities, Frankenmove, Birch Run, Mount Pleasant, Bay City. If you go to those cities, I guarantee the people that live in those cities is going to be doing the work. But it don't seem that way all the time in the city of Saginaw, so.
Well, let me share one thing with you that really goes off the beaten path here. But the reality is, we have a terrible time getting people coming into this industry because people don't think about being water people. The reality is, they turn the faucet on and the water comes out and they flush the toilet and everything goes away. And they're all happy and good and they really don't think about it. So if you know young men through your, your efforts and so on, and Boys and Girls Club and whatever, and Young Women, we're more than happy to have anyone come and consider being part of this great industry because it is rewarding to, to serve the community. And I think people would feel good about themselves doing this work.
Well, thank you, Paul. That brings me to the next segment of your program is maybe you can come down to our youth building and explain to the kids what the water situation is all about. And maybe encourage them to want to get involved.
I would love to do that.
Okay, 126 South Weta. I'm going to get, you can give my phone number and give me a call and we'll set that up. Cause a lot of these guys, man, are first generation, trying to be tradesmen and they don't know anything about this. I was the same way. I'm a pipe fitter. I have a son that's a master plumber. You know, and hopefully maybe one of his sons would be a plumber designer or, or a building designer or something. But if we don't start off somewhere, they don't have any hope. And sometimes they just need to know what's going on about doing the job. So I'd be looking forward to getting a phone call from you soon.
Absolutely. I look forward to it, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I just had one question real quick. What applications did you have to the EPA for funding for lead services? And then what did you, did you apply for statewide programs like LeadSafe for these programs? Or are there any applications?
We have not to date, other than the state funding that's been available. I'll have to be perfectly frank with you. I, I, I pretty much have my hands full with what I'm working on right now. Between the bond issuance and these grants that I'm working on and as well as all the construction and engineering that goes into doing these projects. But we are definitely interested in, in additional federal funding as it becomes available. And in particular, we're, we're very interested to see what might become available out of the American Rescue Plan that the manager has been referring to, as well as the infrastructure funding that is also being considered right now. So don't believe me, don't believe, don't think that we're not effectively trying to get some funding. I just, I, this is where I'm at right now, I guess, is the only way I can answer that.
Yeah, correct. And those two, the two agencies that I had listed are already agencies that are giving funding on top of the American Rescue Plan, so.
Well, I, I may get with you to find out more information about that. If, if you've got direct information, I can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Osteash, you're just listening to that conversation from Councilman Flores and, and Mr. Reich. Cause back in the, back in the beginning, Paul, I correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was an unf- this was an unfunded mandate from the state. And that's where we started. So tonight, it was kind of good to hear that there is some more funding becoming available. And then now even with, as you mentioned too, the new infrastructure bill, you know, fingers crossed that that would pass. We get some, some money underneath there. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there so that some of the council members know that when we started, there was like nothing. And that's why we even saw those small charges on the residents' bill. And in 2019, the city picked up the bill for the, for the residents. So it had not even hit their water bills yet. And one more thing to, to note, if our residents had to do some of these repairs on their own, I mean, you're talking six, seven, eight, $9,000, where we were able to cap that out at about, at the time, we were forecasting with wages three years out into 2022, what you saw at about $3,500-ish per household over the course of the, that he's been mentioning for the years too, so. So this is exciting, Paul. I'm glad to hear that you have some stuff. And Councilman Flores, I had no idea about that either, so I'd even be interested to read some stuff on that.
Thank you, Councilman Osteash. It wa- it was unfunded initially and Mayor Clark had made it clear that he was, he wanted us to look for funding that might be available. And that's why we've been, I shouldn't say that's the only reason why we care about what it costs our customers. But we, we definitely have been looking into that.
All right, thank you. Good report.
Are there any more questions?
I have one. And Paul, now you said there's going to be some more presentations coming up on this. Would, is that going to have to, will it deal with like the inventory? Are we still inventorying the city? Or do we have, I think there was like five years we had to inventory every household and whether they had lead pipes or not. I think that might be ongoing. There was a percentage over time they had to take place. So is that the presentation that's coming later?
Yeah, the presentation that we'll be giving you at the next council meeting, part of, there's two aspects. One would be the scheduling of this public hearing for the grants that I'm telling you about. But in addition, I'll be doing a, an update of status or, or someone, but probably the MBB. We'll be doing an update of the status in terms of verifications, as well as lead service line replacements to date. And I believe one of the council members has, had asked for that update. So we are, we are in the process of developing that. Yes, that's, so that's why we're doing that.
Yeah, because I have gotten some questions recently on that. So just since I're kind of wondering where the process is at. So thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the project that we're doing over at Alexander, because you, you mentioned the water main repair. Would there be any lead replacement that goes along with that? Cause that was one of the things we were looking at too. So while we're doing these large scale infrastructure projects in the city, that as the water mains are being replaced, we'd also take care of everybody's water lines at that time. And that might actually.
Yeah, what, what we've been doing is, and that is one exception to what we've typically done too. Mayor Protem Balls mentioned whether we're self-funding everything. Well, some of the construction, when we're replacing water main, we have included lead service line replacement as part of the construction project. So that, but that's mainly for full road replacement and construction. When we're doing a mill and fill as, as we're, or a cape seal, as we're referred to, those don't require as much damage, but we do try to go through and replace lines in those roadways as we can, so that we're not going through and cutting those up either. And we are doing those with our own staff to the best of our ability.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. And one more thing, Paul, because I know we're, once we get post-COVID and we can start to get out, I encourage the council members to have one of Paul's tours of the water facility. It is quite the tour. And I've even mentioned to manager Morales. And um, I've even mentioned to Manager Morales, even though I've toured the water plant here on Russ, that I was over in the um. Our wastewater treatment facility back there and it's like a small city back there, so I would. In the future, I would love a tour of that one too, so.
Okay, we'd be glad to have any council come and tour. It's uh, valuable.
Values, yeah, it's uh, interesting stuff that you guys do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Mr. Paul, as usual. Fantastic. You really update me every time you talk to me. You make me wanna get my water fixed. Thank you so much for your time and efforts and I'm sure, once again. This is not just for the citizens, it's also for us as council persons to know what's going on in our city. So there's a group called Government One-on-One, Councilwoman Bench, and the team, your team. This, this could be a part of council, it could be a part, a part of your, a part of your presentation that you have going on. So thank you so much, Paul. City Manager, Mr. Manager. We're back to you.
Yes, thank you, Paul, and um, I, I would also remind a council and the public that. Um, there is a line on your water bill that is to pay for this line replacement. And um, we did specifically um, cost that out, our rate, our rate uh, setting consultant did that for us. And we do have it on there because we wanted to show the public the cost of this unfunded mandate. But also remember that um, not every uh, home in the city does have a, a, a line with lead components. So um, each residence will eventually have a line replacement, whether you have that or not. Um, we have that set up in a fund and um, unfortunately, it may not be you because it may come a number of years down the line. But um, that was our intent when we did set up this program so that we don't have um. People paying into it that, that um, don't see a benefit until later. Because I can tell you that um, we did have a number of residents replace their lines over the years on their home. Whether it's because they were renovating their home or they had some issues with tree roots or something like that, so. We didn't wanna close anyone out, so I know Paul worked on that with uh, Kim Mason, our former director and it's something and Phil Carwatt as well. Something that we talked about that we wanted to make sure that, that everyone had that opportunity, so. Uh, they've done, they've done a lot of work on it and um, appreciate the presentation. I thank you, Paul, and with that, that concludes the management update.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manager.
Mrs. Uh, I just wanted to mention something uh. That happened since the uh, city manager being in office. And when we uh, first come on city council, me and Brendan, we had people that was complaining about the roads that need to be fixed. Now they're complaining because they're fixing their roads. Because they complained about now every time I go somewhere, one of the roads is getting fixed. So I, I think that's a beautiful thing uh, that's happened in the city so far and maybe uh. I don't know, just squeaky wheel is the one to get the oil. Maybe if you complain enough, then maybe something would happen with that particular situation. Um, I don't know how uh, Mr. Morales found money for uh, these endeavors to get done. But it did get done and I'm happy about that and 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 hopefully that the city will continue to do good things so we can make our city look beautiful. So thank you, Mr. Morales, for your uh, due diligence. And your department heads.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Balls, and I, and I will just uh, add to that that um. There, there's a great team over at Public Services and um, Phil Carwatt's the department head. And we see the engineering staff that presented today and it goes all the way down through the line. The streets foreman has come up with a lot of ideas and um, and down through the line and I know he takes input from his staff, so. We have an excellent staff over there and and wanna give them credit for the work that they've uh, been doing on these projects. There's been a lot of innovation and a lot of uh, changing the way we do business, a lot of unique ideas, so. Um, they should get that credit for uh, for expanding our uh, our construction projects and getting uh, the most out of the money, the limited funds that we have. And I'll say you're, you're right, uh, Councilman Balls. We uh, we, we still get complaints about the streets, but we get a lot of complaints about the construction. And then once it's fixed, we get complaints about the um, speed that the drivers are going down because the streets are so nice.
Right, right.
But we, we're uh, trying to get to as many as we can, so appreciate those comments.
Yes, please, please pass on to the staff to let them know that uh, I'm sure. The rest of the city council feel the same way I feel and let them know we're really happy what they're doing.
Agreed.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on City webpage and on SGTV, Channel one ninety-one. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with exceptions.
I have uh, exceptions. I'm sorry, I have exceptions. Yeah, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, uh, um, consent agenda number one and two.
Okay, first we have to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Bench moves the acceptance of the uh, consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Second.
Now, which, which are exceptions? She said one.
Mine is one and two.
Anyone else?
Then mine is also number twenty-two.
Twenty or twenty-two, which one?
Twenty-two.
Okay. Are there any others? A motion is on the floor, leaving exceptions for one and two. One and two and twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Madam Clerk.
All right, item number one is to approve the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting. Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, my problem, my problem with that is I've expressed it, I'm gonna express it again, is that um. The item, let me go right to it, please, I'm sorry. Um. Where it mentions. Under uh, reports from the city manager. Uh, certain people that appeared to be off a camera. Uh, I haven't noticed that as being a practice. I would like that to be excluded unless we go back to the beginning of our um. Stay-at-home in the pandemic and do that with all, all persons. That have left the site or their camera was off. And just because the camera is off, I'll reiterate from last uh, meeting, that does not mean that the person. Is not there listening. So when you say they left the meeting, they could have just had their camera on. And also, it's, some of that is repeated. Under uh, miscellaneous business. Where it's also under there again, and I'm just gonna have to um, object to that because that's not. Practice that I have seen since I've been on, on council. This, this is a new thing for everybody, the pandemic and doing uh, our, our council meetings remotely, et cetera. So I, I just have to uh, disagree with that.
Yeah, I also, yeah, I would move to uh, re-edit the meeting minutes. That, that had been listed as being off or leaving the meeting for six times. Uh, most of which were under a minute, so really we're talking about seconds. And I had also given information to the council that it was just due to technical difficulties. That's why I'm in the current chambers, cause I'm uh, using the city's upgraded wifi. And I'll continue to do that for, for different council uh, hearings. But. In regards to the meeting minutes. Yeah, I agree. If we do, if we go back all the way to April of last year, there was. Multiple people all the way up until this last meeting, manager. And his current council members, former council members, so just in regards to that. Uh, approval of the regular meeting minutes, I would ask that my um. Leaving the meeting be struck from that and it be noted that there were technical difficulties, but that I would, I had never actually left the meeting.
But my, my thing is, so I can make it plain, is that I think it all should be taken out. Or to go, to retract and go back and add it all in. For every meeting.
So does anyone have a motion to amend? Are you making a motion or?
Yeah, a motion to amend the, the minutes for uh, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
To state what?
That I did not leave the meeting for six times. At all.
So you want it retracted? You want it taken out entirely?
Correct, entirely.
Can I?
What's that, George?
I don't know if I could amend an amendment. I would like it all taken out. Or, and or reworded and go back to when we first started uh, utilizing our iPads for our meetings. And include all of that in. So I don't know.
I think that, that's part, that's part two.
You, no, Mr. Flor- uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Flores, you were saying specifically yourself. I'm, I'm thinking of everyone that was named in there. Either take everyone out. Re, or and or reworded or go back to when we first started the meeting. And add everyone that appeared to have left the meeting. And or that did leave the meeting. Or turned their camera off.
I think those are potentially two separate motions and you have one motion on the table that currently has no. So why don't we deal with that one first?
Which one is that?
It's Councilmember Flores's motion to amend. And I don't believe there's been a second, but the clerk can confirm.
There has not been a second. Uh, Councilman Flores, could you repeat your amendment? The wording that you'd like.
Motion to revise the meeting minutes for uh, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one to. Uh, revise that I did not leave the meeting for six times. Your second.
There's a motion on the floor. I need a second. There's a motion on the floor. I need a second. There's a motion on the floor. I need a second. Last and final time. There's a motion on the floor and I need a second. Madam Clerk.
And motion dies then.
Okay.
So at that point, we need to go back to the main motion.
Right.
Okay, that, right, and, and that would be, do I need to explain, say that again?
You would have to state your amendment if that's what you'd like to do.
My, my amendment is to item number one. Two, and I, I hope I'm saying it correctly. To remove all the names of council persons that were stated to have left the meeting. Or appeared to have left the meeting. Or to go back and add all of the council persons that have left the meetings. Uh, since we started uh, meeting virtually.
I believe those are two separate things. I think it needs to be either one or the other.
Okay, can we do two motions on the same? Well, I would say to remove that. To remove all the names of people that have appeared to or have left the meeting in the last meeting.
Councilwoman. Okay, I'm sorry. Someone was going to say something and I didn't hear that they were seconding.
Sorry, that was me, Mayor. I was just gonna mention that I, I don't. Going back into previous minutes, I don't think that that's a motion that would, would be in order. Right. At this point in the meeting anyway.
All of those minutes have been approved.
Beg your pardon? Well, that's why it just doesn't look, it just doesn't, I mean, there, there's the motion. I don't know if I need a second or if I'll get one. But it doesn't, it. It doesn't look right. It doesn't appear right to a, a, all of a sudden start doing. So if I can't go back to the minutes that were approved, I would like the names of the council members to be removed that appeared to have left the meeting.
There's a motion. Okay.
Can I, can I speak on that motion, please? You know, I um, I have left the meeting before and, and, and it's not a big deal to leave the meeting. I mean, you left the meeting, you left the meeting. I mean, people had to use the bad phone. We are at home. There's some things that we can't stop, but all, I understand that Brenda was trying to do was she let everybody need to know. That we need to keep our computers on because we in a meeting. You know, I, I, I wouldn't take this personal, you know, if, if people are feeling persons, it's not a big deal because. Anybody can leave a meeting. We have things we gotta do. I mean, the other councilman said it is uh. Uh, he wasn't getting his wifi. Now we rectifying that problem, so it's not a problem. Ain't nobody beating up on anybody. It's just that all this stuff is new. And that sometime we wasn't on the camera. Uh, before I even realized it, sometime I had cut my camera off because I was doing some other thing. You know, and I was other places or something like that. So now we gotta rule what we say. Um, when you come on, you gotta say where you at, you're in Saginaw. You know, I could have been out of town at one of the meetings and the next time I'm out of town, I would say uh, Michael Balls uh, in Carlton or something like that. You know, so this, this is not anything I think we need to worry about. It's just uh, we all knew at this. Um, some people did have their cameras off, some people had technical problems. And it's not to beat anybody up. I mean, ain't nobody getting, you're not getting your pay taken out from you or anything like that, cause we don't make nothing, honestly. And um, you know, so it's not a big deal, you know, I, I'm kinda happy we're not having these meetings. Uh, that the city council turns this thing because the amount of money I paid, no pay to get my clothes clean. You know what I'm saying? I had a minute. When I started the shirt, it cost a little money, you know what I'm saying? So. I, I wouldn't worry about this. I mean, we can just go on and get to the next thing that really. Cause it's not really bothering anybody, you know, you're gonna be all right. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Anybody else?
We all, can I?
That would be, that would be, we all have an opinion.
Point of order, point of order.
Hello?
Point of order.
Okay. Now all.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
Please.
I, I think we need a second to continue to say.
I think we got a second from Councilman Flores and Marady Wong.
Yes, you're correct. A couple of minutes ago.
Yep.
We've got a mo- we got a motion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, somebody said something.
Yes, that was Councilwoman Bench, if I may. Um, as one of the members of council who um, is notated in the minutes as leaving last meeting, I'm perfectly fine with having that reflected there. Um, I think our clerk has a struggle um, keeping track of who leaves the meeting when because we're not all on um, camera at the same time. Like right now, I'm looking at Jeff Klopsick in a blank screen and I see George, Councilman Flores, Councilman Ostache, our attorney. And Councilman Scherzer. And um, for our attorney or our city clerk to be able to keep track of people's presence in the meeting, because we do have to maintain a quorum. And we do have to prove to the public that we do have a quorum. Um, and her ability to scroll back and forth, notating people when they leave or when they're, you know, not there and then not being accurate with the times and such. Creates a problem because if we were meeting in person, if I were to leave the ba- you know, for the bathroom and leave the council table, everyone there would see me leave. And it would be reflected in the minutes. So the only new part of this is that we're meeting virtually and our clerk has been struggling to keep track of people's FaceTime. Um, and again, we do have to have a quorum when we are discussing these things. So um, you know, I, for, for someone who is notated in the minutes at the last meeting, I have absolutely no problem with that being reflected. And uh, you know, that's, that's my thoughts.
All right, if I may, I think we're just talking about consent agenda number one, not number two. Alright, if I may, I think we're just talking about consent agenda number one, not number two. Where we're gonna be changing the, the rules. But in regards to the twenty second of March. I, I did not personally leave the meeting seven, six times or seven times. There was a connection issue. I had come to the city council to be here and use our city's wifi. I know it's not a big deal, but if we're talking about revising history and having other people in the public. Assume that I left the meeting seven times when I didn't, there has to be some type of precedent or there has to be some type of regular protocol. Because when we go back to April of twenty twenty, when the manager. City, current city council members, past city council members had left the meeting and it wasn't annotated in the meeting minutes. It looks like it's being discriminatory against one person. And that happens to be me, but we have to, we have to either play by the rules. And go to the consent agenda number two and then ratify the rules or not. But we can't make up the rules beforehand and then ratify the rules. Because that seems like we're not governing in the correct way. And of course, I agree with Mayor Pro Temp. It's not a big deal until somebody calls it into question. And somebody inaccurately puts it up into the meeting minutes. And then it becomes an issue that we don't need to deal with because in terms of the city of Saginaw. There are so many more things that we need to deal with than wifi connections or people being on screen or not. So in terms of this first consent agenda. Which the, our city lawyer just said that every other meeting minutes had been approved. I do not approve that I had left the meeting seven different times for less than one minute. Because I had connection issues. And I, I had spoken with the manager. He had said to bring this up. That we would just ratify it and it would be a easy peasy thing. But it's not seeming to be that way. And so when we talk about these kinds of things. There seems to be a larger issue than people just leaving the, the meetings uh, due to wifi connection.
Maybe I should have explained the motion better, so I, I don't know. Because you can leave, you can leave the meeting and leave your camera on. That, that's what, that's what, uh, maybe I should have explained it more. Maybe it didn't come across right.
There's a motion and it's a second on the floor. Uh, Madam Clerk, how do we proceed or our attorney, how do we proceed? Can we continue with the voting process? Or do we have more discussion? Because we could be here all night on that same discussion. So how, how do we, how, how should we handle this?
If there's more members of council who would like to speak, that's an option or someone can call the question.
I'll call the question.
Yeah, I'll call it, yeah.
Okay. Question. There's a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, can you read the motion again, please?
Yes, the motion is to amend the March twenty second, twenty twenty one minutes. By removing the names of councilpersons to, that appeared to have left the meeting.
It's been moved a second. Do we have any more discussion? Hearing, hearing, hearing no more discussion, let's do a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let's do a real call vote.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Balls.
Aye.
Councilmember Balls.
Councilmember Bench. I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, no.
Councilmember Ostache.
Hi.
Councilmember Scherzer.
No.
Councilmember Copeland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Aye.
Councilmember Flores.
Aye.
And Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Okay, you have seven, yep, you have seven yes and two no.
Number two. I'm sorry.
Back to the main motion.
Back to the main motion.
On number one, someone needs to move one as amended.
So move.
Second.
I'm hearing, but I don't, I'm, I thought I heard a second. Who seconded?
Copeland's second.
I'm hearing a lot of echoes or something. It's like people are saying something twice.
Right, that's why I was asking the question. Because I, I hear then I don't hear. It, no, it's not just you. It was moved and who seconded it? Madam Clerk, did you get that?
I have Monique as the motion and Copeland as the second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I will say uh, one thing. It appears that we are, with the item number two, that we're gonna be talking about, that that is a, a good lead in to what we're doing here right now. And that's why I'm going to approve our minutes and go back to the mo- to the main motion. Because I believe that uh, it is right that if we're going to change the rules, that we get through these minutes first. And that's why. That's just a comment I wanted to make.
Okay, so it's been moved to the second. Any more discussion? Hearing no discussions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those, all of those that don't support. Eyes have it. Madam Clerk.
Okay, item number two. Approve the introduction of the amendment, the council rules of order of the city of Saginaw.
Okay.
The member Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, um. I, I looked at that and I thought about it. And um, my first problem would be that um. Number three, uh, at page seven, number three and number four.
But note, only the language in red is before council.
Right, right. I understand. Thank you. In number three. It, it, now, I, I, and I, I guess maybe I need clarification. I could be wrong. But it states that um, and I'm going back to the um. The city, uh, our city council reference manual that was revised in twenty twenty. And um, and here it says, uh, in the red or local ordinances, but I do have to uh, read the other part. By the governor or local official governing body, and I would believe that would be council, if I'm, if I'm correct. Or chief, chief administrative officer. And the way I'm reading it, and like I said, I stand to be corrected, the way I'm reading it, it's like. Uh, the city manager would have uh. Presidents over what the city council is doing. And in regards to calling or not calling that, that particular meeting, I'm thinking. That, that that would fall upon the maybe the mayor. The mayor pro temp or the entire city council, not to the chief administrative officer. So I'm asking that that be removed.
That language um, actually reads exactly the way the Open Meetings Act reads. So that language, those changes in number three were made to mirror the state law that controls.
Okay, okay. And then down in number four. Well, look, look, I, 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 I was saying in regards to the total thing, I did, probably shouldn't separate them so I can make this easy. I have brought things up that I thought should be looked at in the uh, city uh, council rules of order. My position is we not nitpick and pick whenever we decide to add or delete something. But we come together as a body and look at the entire piece. And let's work on this together. That, that, I guess that would be my uh, opposition. That we're going piece by piece and someone may have something next month. Somebody may wanna take something out. I thought that, if, if I'm not mistaken, I thought I read somewhere. And if I didn't, I think the city council. Should come together as the, as a co- as the council that we are. And look at the uh, city of Saginaw county rules of order. Together and uh, re- redo uh, whatever we think that needs to be redone. And then bring it to the council and vote on it. I, I think this is kinda like, in my opinion, out of order. That we should do this together as a, a body.
Can, can I say this? I think that the corrections, we talked about this at our last meeting. And it was so that people moving forward, understand me, going forward. We're asking, okay? It's always been a ask. No, it's not been mandated, but it has also been said, if we, if we added it to our council rules of order. Then we would not be out of order. Correct me, attorney Lust, if I'm right or wrong. And so at our last meeting, it was mentioned and we all agreed to move forward with it. And I guess, I guess I got questions now. What, what happened?
I must have missed that. I know it was some, some.
At, at the last meeting, there was a request made that a amendment be brought forward for council discussion. That is where we are at right now. An amendment is being brought forward for council to discuss as a whole.
Okay, well, here would be my part of the discussion for number four. And I think I had brought it up before and I also brought it up uh, in our last meeting. Where it states the camera shall remain on, that doesn't mean that a councilperson is actually at the meeting. That means that their camera is on. So I can have my camera on and walk away and I can have my camera off and yet be there. So I guess my problem would be with the wording. That would be my second problem. And I think we're setting the precedence here to, to go in to our uh, rules of order. When something doesn't set right or appear to not set right. Where we, I think, should go in and do this together as a whole. So there's my discussion and there we have it. Because if we're gonna, if we're gonna leave it in, it would make sense to say, to be worded different.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? Anyone else have anything to say?
And correct me if I'm wrong, with Councilwoman Sylvia's comment. Is she saying that she wants their, that it should be their camera shall remain on? And member present during the course of the meeting?
I'm not. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'm not sure. That's why I'm asking with that question. I'm not sure. So, Councilwoman Sylvia, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My main objective is to even be doing it, but that, that's over there. But my thing would be, we would have to reword it. Because like I said, if the camera is on, my camera can be on right now. And you, it could be facing the wall and I could be, you know, I mean, you understand what I'm saying? I can be anywhere. I can be doing anything, but the thing, it, but in the uh, in the uh. Where you add it, it says have the camera on. It is say be present with the camera on.
Makes sense to me.
Which makes sense?
What she's saying. She, she, she's making perfect sense. It, the word, the wording just, it just needs to be reworded so it reflects that. If the camera's on, you need to be present in front of the camera. Or leave the camera on and we are free to do whatever we want. But the wording does not reflect what we're trying to do, I guess. So she, she's.
Okay, I, I got clarity. I just needed to understand. So.
Let me, Mayor, let me um. I would, I'd ask the city attorney to, to maybe read the change. Um, because a lot of people might not have this in front of them in the public. But I, I will also mention when the state of Michigan was allowing, um, was. Amending or, or changing the Open Meetings Act. The issue that they were talking about with virtual meetings is transparency. So there was a lot of talk about you needed to be seen and heard during the meetings. The ultimate, um, I think the, the ultimate finalized was to be heard. Which, which doesn't have the um, the camera portion or the video portion. But um, because I think there were some issues and the, the city attorneys brought up people who may be deployed or some other things like that. Um, I think, you know, the thought was for transparency purposes. You wanna have uh, video of the council member or board member there and that's intent. So um, but I just asked now the city attorney if you could read the change. Because I don't, I don't, um, I don't have it here in my packet, so I'm not sure what happened, but there may be others that don't have that.
Sure, the change would add to number four. Where technology has been provided or is otherwise available to members of city council. That allows them to participate remotely via video conference. Their cameras shall remain on during the course of the meeting. I, I believe the way it's written, it indicates that anybody who is participating remotely will have their camera on.
So can we add right after their camera shall remain on to be seen and heard during the course of the meeting? Just taking from what uh, Manager Morales just said, that was the premise, is to be seen and heard. If we added that right after to, uh, the camera should remain on to be seen and heard during the course of the meeting.
Okay, it's the, and then you have another little part that would have to be in there. Because just like if we were in person, uh, like Councilman Bench said, sometimes you have to leave. Or I believe that was heard, it says sometimes you might have to go to the restroom. It's times you leave there. So it, it doesn't need to be um, uh, a bad thing. Then that would come in where uh, the city manager would ask, okay, Monique Lamar Sylvia left the meeting. So if I'm at home and I'm remote and I have to uh, step away. Okay, we already know that it's a rule that you have to be seen and heard, not just the camera on. If you're opening a door, a door can be open for just what I'm saying now. Hey, my camera was on, but I wasn't, you never saw me.
Yeah, this is Ostache. I, I just wanna make a comment because what I'm hearing is, and, and this would be like, even if we were in the chambers. You know, there's been situations where, you know, somebody's had to step away or for various reasons and a vote was taken place and you have to reflect that. So what I'm hearing from all this conversation is we just have to let it known when we are on camera. Or when we are in the meeting or not.
Yes.
That is the question that I'm hearing here over and over again.
Yes.
How do we, and I agree, you know, the camera can go off, I'm still there. But I need to make it known that I'm there. So how do we define that? Do we put it in the chat? Because how are we gonna get it to the, because how are we gonna get it to the clerk? So she knows that we really did leave the meeting.
If, if I can, there's been a couple of meetings where I've actually put in the chat. That I either had to leave or I had to step away to get the charger for my computer. And I took, I put that in the chat. So I mean, it's a simple remedy. Uh, but this wording here, it just needs to address it.
Right.
Well, it will be up to the council members and maybe that's what we do. We, we put it in the chat, I need to leave the meeting. And then you put it in it when you are back. That will record it for us at that point.
I think part of the issue though is, I don't think the clerk, the clerk is paying attention. But I don't know that they can watch everybody's video on the screen or have time to look at the chat.
Right, it's not available to the public. So we can't have members using the chat as a form of communication during a public. So we can't have members using the chat as a form of communication during a public meeting.
Well, can we just verbally say Councilman Monique Sylvia is stepping away? I mean, I, I don't know, it, it has to be a remedy.
I had my virtual hand raised for a minute here. The clerk, the clerk's been.
We can't see you, we can't see you when it's raised, trust me. Okay.
The clerk was awfully good about watching everyone's screen for the 20 second. And being able to dictate what times people were on or off screen. I think that this, section 20, number four is uh not the best route to take. The best way to go about it is just to strike that from section 20, number four. And continue to have the same meetings that we've been having since virtual meetings began last April. And without rewording uh every meeting. The one thing that I am concerned about is in two years when possibly new members come onto the council. That they will not have the connection wifi. Because they either are low income or not able to afford high speed internet. And they will have to do the same recourse that I'm doing currently, which is coming to City Hall. To take time to use their wifi to make sure that I have a connection so I could be on camera. To ensure people that I'm at the meeting. So I would strike, you know, we'll, we'll go over this motion first, but I'm going to make a, a motion to strike uh section 20. Number 20, section four.
I, I think that, I think we, we've gotten out of control with this. It, it is not a point at anybody. It is just saying, moving forward. We'd like to do it this way. Whether people can afford the internet or not, we're not. I know I'm not criticizing anybody in terms of that. There are times when everybody cannot do everything. And so in order for us to move forward. This correction that we're talking about was talked about at last meeting. And, and today it was being presented and it was to, so that we can at least be. On the camera and, and, and when, I guess when I look at it. I'm looking at you being on the camera. If you have to leave, I'm not expecting for everybody to sit in front of it all the time. And, and they may have to go. There may be times which I know I can't get up and go. But I'm gonna try to do the best I can to stay in front. And so I think we're taking this way out of proportion. And, and I really want to make it, I really don't want for us to feel divided. Or there's another issue going on. At the end of the day, we need to do something. And, and this is what I thought we decided to do. Because we talked about it at the last meeting, so somebody else correct me. Because this was talked about at the last meeting, adding this portion to this. And that is why Councilwoman Bench, who, who mentioned it, moved forward with our city attorney. That's why they moved forward with it. So somebody please give me some clarity, please.
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, there, I think there is a motion on the floor. We need to either have a second and then move to a vote.
There's a motion on the floor, Madam Clerk, can you reread the motion?
The motion is to remove the amendment um to section 20, item four.
It's been moved, who was it moved, it was moved by?
It was moved by Councilman Flores.
And it was seconded by, was it seconded?
No.
I second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Silver. It's been moved to second, any more discussion?
My, I have a question, I don't know if it's discussion or what. Is it, I. Does it actually have to even be in here?
Pardon me?
Why, why does it even actually have to be in here as opposed to us just adhering to it? Like I'm hearing most of the councils say, well, sometime I leave, sometime I don't. Okay. And I guess the city manager at this point is going to start from uh here on out adding the, a person left or whatever. So why does it even have to be in there? And, and I, and you're, you are correct, um, um, Madam Mayor. I think it is something that uh. Has become a bigger, a bigger problem than just what it actually is.
We're gonna call the question.
The wording, the wording is just, it, it's just. I don't know what to do with it after this. Because as it stands, with the wording in here, and I think uh Councilman Oystash. Kind of brought it all together. So either we take it out and come back, and revisit it, word it correctly. Because taking it out now is not saying that we're not going to look at it. I, I, I guess I'm asking a question to the city attorney. Taking it out now and revising it. Is that the same thing, is that the same motion or no?
You have a motion on the table that is only to strike the amended language from section four.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna leave that like that then.
There's a motion on, there's a motion on the floor. It's been called to a vote by Councilwoman Scherzer to remove. To, the, the motion was to remove item four. On this, on this revised agenda, I'm sorry.
And, and I want to be clear, that's just the proposed amended language to item four. Not all of it.
Thank you, not all of it, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So we have a motion and a second on the floor, we're gonna go for a vote. I think we should do roll call. Cause we, I really want to make sure. Unless the council sees another way to do it. We can do roll call or we can just call it out.
Your pleasure, Mayor. Your pleasure.
Let's do roll call.
Councilmember Williams.
Hi.
Councilmember Balls.
No.
Councilmember Bench. Councilmember Oystash.
I'm going to vote yes because I just don't support everything that's there and for the reasons why. There's got to be a way for us to say that we are not here, so my vote is aye.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
And Mayor Moore?
No.
You have five yes votes and four no votes.
Madam attorney? What is next, please?
So you're back to your main motion on item number two. Is to move the introduction of the amendments to the council rules of order as amended.
Okay.
Um, Madam Mayor, and.
Yes.
I need a little bit of help on this. Um, is there a way to move, put a motion on the floor for an amendment to number four now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I move that section 20, remote participation. Number four, the current wording to include after. And George, help me. Uh, cameras on with.
Shall remain, um their cameras shall remain, remain on to be seen and heard during the course of the meeting.
Thank you.
Second that amendment, Bench?
It's been moved to second, any discussion?
Are we going back to the original precedent that we set? I apologize, there's, is there any difference between striking that from the rules to what's worded differently with uh. Councilwoman Scherzer's motion?
So mine's an amendment to the wording to include.
And what is, what is added to that?
George.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll read it in full.
Thank you.
Yes, as, as I understand it, so. A councilwoman. Scherzer's amendment would be to add to number four. Where technology has been provided or is otherwise available. To members of the city council that allows them to participate remotely via video conference. Their cameras shall remain on to be seen and to be heard during the course of the meeting.
But wasn't that voted down? So now that language is no longer there or is it, it's currently still there?
I, I believe the deputy clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but effectively your first motion was a motion to amend to. Remove language from number four and now there's another motion to amend. To add different language to number four.
So all the original language and then a couple of words?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I don't know, I heard Ms. Lust essay that you could explain it and.
So Councilmember Flores. Councilmember Flores's amendment was to remove the additional language in section 20, item four. That entire paragraph that um Amy read a moment ago. Councilwoman Scherzer is adding the language back in, but also adding to remain on, be seen and heard during the course of the meeting.
Robert Rules of Order, is, are we in order?
I believe we are.
Mr. Flores, did that answer your question?
Uh, it did, yes. Uh, I motion to postpone this to the, the next meeting.
We have a motion on the floor right now, do we? Madam Clerk, clarity?
You have a motion and a second, you have to take the vote.
Okay. Got a motion, we've been second, any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Balls. I didn't hear you. Councilmember Bench?
Aye.
Councilmember Oystash?
Aye.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
And Mayor Moore?
Aye.
You have nine ayes, the motion carries.
Okay. We had one more that we needed to answer?
We have to go back to the main.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Okay, we have to go back to the main motion.
I move to accept consent agen- agenda item number two. Am I right?
As amended. As amended.
As amended, correct. I just want to make sure I have the number right.
Sorry, I support that.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Or do you feel like we need a roll call?
No, no.
Any objections?
Well, I probably leave, I'm letting y'all know, I'm leaving now. For a minute.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Then we also had, Madam Clerk, there was another question?
Yes, item number 22.
And that was?
To approve the purchase? Yep, to approve the purchase with Padwanzal Buick GMC for $39,667. For a 2021 GMC Sierra 2500 HD double for the streets.
Here coming up.
Councilman Flores, I think that was you.
Yeah, correct. And uh, Manager Morales, was this part of the addition, the same program that we had bought all these trucks for? For the water in the fire department or is this a separate program?
Uh, Councilman Flores, can you guys hear me? This is uh.
I can hear you, Phil.
Yes, you're spinning, Mr. Car Watch.
You might have to turn your camera off. Can you hear it? You can hear us now?
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can with your camera, yeah.
Yeah, I shut my video off, maybe my video was causing my, my screen to, to freeze, so. Um, no, it's a different program, um, it's a different use.
Okay, so it's not the buyback program?
Use these, much heavier duty usage, we actually use our trucks, we need them to be a little bigger and heavier. Um, in the winter, because we do a lot of plowing of our side streets and our back of curb parking areas and stuff, so. Um, it, it, the, the, the same trucks that we got through the McDonald buyback program. Uh, wouldn't uh be of best use in the streets division, so it's a different program than the previously approved trucks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Flores, it's your pleasure.
Yeah, uh, Philly's still there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Was there any type of uh truck that would be able to fit this type of work that was a hybrid truck? Or is this the only option?
Yeah, you're talking like uh electrical, gas? Um, I, we've looked into that, we're actually looking into, I don't think they're there yet, at least for what the cost of those vehicles are. Um, we have looked at some of them for passenger vehicles, just for some of our divisions that use passenger vehicles, but. Um, the price is still quite high, but I have not seen any. Um, you know, as far as the hybrid goes, that would be economical. I'm hoping in the next couple of years that, that, that type of truck will be more economical. We, we will be looking at purchasing either more of an all electric vehicle or even a hybrid. Um, I know that the Taholes, I know they got them in the Taholes and uh. Um, but, but them hybrids, you know, with them going in and out of uh electric to gas and, and different things. I, I think that would create more of issues in how we use these trucks, especially when we're plowing as well, at least with where the technology is right now. But I know the cost is a lot more as well.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you.
And this purchase here, the truck is 31,000 and then unlike the, the facilities division, McDonald buyback program. We are adding the plowing debt to this, which is adding about eight to 9,000 in the cost. So that's what the difference you're seeing in these trucks as well between this program and the Ford buyback program. The, the Ford trucks, we weren't buying plows for.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, I motion to accept this content agenda item.
It's been moved, can I get a second?
Oh.
It's been moved to second, any discussion, any more discussion?
Who has a second?
I did, Michael did.
If there's no more discussion, let's take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are at board commission committee report.
Do we have any board meetings or any commission reports? Madam Clerk?
We are now at appointment of board and commission members.
We have seven different appointments. Can we do them all in one vote or do we need to separate them?
You can do them all at once, there's actually six of them.
Right, I'm.
I'm sorry, I, look, I'm sorry, I added another number.
I move to approve the six board and commission appointments.
Second.
Second's that.
Ms. Chris, Madam Clerk, did you get to second?
I did, yep.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
We have one ordinance to introduce this evening. It's to amend chapter 153 of title 15. It's to amend chapter one fifty-three of title fifteen, land usage by amending section one fifty-three point six zero five titled approval procedures for marijuana establishment in section one fifty-three point six zero six titled authorized marijuana establishment of the city of Saginaw.
I need a motion to introduce?
So moved.
It's been moved to second? This, this ordinance will be laid over under the chartered provision. Any questions? Let's take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
We are now to resolutions, the first one is authorizing installment to contracts for equipment.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Ball support.
It's been moved to support, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? The ayes have it.
The second resolution is approving the cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the preventative maintenance work on Western Street Bridge for the engineering section right-of-way division.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved, Balls.
Bench seconds.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Alright.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
Our next resolution is approving the cost agreement with Michigan Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Mackinac Street from Alexander Street to Hamilton Street for the engineering section right-of-way division.
Balls moved.
I need a motion to adopt. I think Mayor Protem Balls moved, I need a second. It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
Our final resolution is to support of recognizing lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer or questioning individuals as a protected class.
Bench moves.
I need a motion to adopt. Bench moved, seconded?
Uh, Lamar Sylvia.
I think I did.
Any discussion?
Uh, I had real, the comment real quick, I just wanna thank uh Councilwoman Bench for bringing this up last meeting. It it, it's incredibly uh honorable and courageous of her to do so. I think it's important message that we send to all of our constituents, that we are in an oak, uh open and welcoming community. I think that we can go one step further after this resolution passes, hopefully, of uh re bringing back the ordinance from two thousand and fourteen that Councilwoman Bench originally brought forth and of making sure that we are able to protect any LGBTQ folks from um being uh either fired, or not given public assistance, or uh just making sure that the ordinance in two thousand and fourteen that was originally put forth is possibly passed. So, I know this, this is kind of a step forward. I'm hoping that everybody that is on that uh committee is going to be able to move quickly. Uh, but I am in full support of this resolution and of that ordinance um from seven years ago. So that's all I have.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Councilman Oystash should like to say something real quick. Okay, um, well, as a member of this community, um I do applaud the efforts that you are bringing forth to here. I also sit on the board of directors for Great Lakes Bay Pride. And we do a lot of outreach in the uh, in the state, uh state level, state legislatures, uh equality Michigan. Um, and people don't sometimes realize the work that is being done in this community as well as a lot of our other communities, cause we also deal with homelessness. Um, kids that do not have a meal or a place to go. So um, Councilman Flores, uh, thanks for those comments. I think there's another section of our ordinances that could also be um, that we could look at as a committee. Uh, it has to deal with our housing, cause our housing does have sexual orientation in our ordinance as it is now. Uh, we do not cover gender identity, so that could still be something that the uh, the um equal rights commission could look at, or the HRC as we call it. Uh, so that is, that's all I have, Mayor, I just wanted to make that quick comment.
Councilwoman Bench, real quick, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, um I just wanted to thank the staff for putting this together, um it is exactly what I was hoping for um as far as the language and the intent, so I really appreciate the great deal. And uh if Mayor, you can follow up with me after we have a vote, I do have a a motion I would like to make after this, thank you.
It's been moved, any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
We are now at miscellaneous business.
And Councilwoman Bench has something.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I would like to make a motion to refer discussion um and any possible development of a human rights ordinance to the standing human rights work group that already exists and has been having some conversation in that direction.
It is been moved? Do I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, although any discussion, I'm sorry.
Yes, can you repeat that motion, please?
Is that Councilwoman Bench?
Yes, please, sorry.
Okay, I didn't know if the clerk got it or not, but I would like to make a motion to refer discussion on any possible development of a human rights ordinance to the standing human rights work group which is the commission that uh Councilman Oystash just referred in his, to in his comments.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, it was moved and seconded? Any more discussion? Let's take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is there any other miscellaneous business?
Yes, Madam Moore.
Yes, I did see you, I see you waving.
Um, I know we appro- approved consent agenda item number nine, but uh Mister Manager, if we could have a presentation, because I am excited that we are working on small-scale infrastructure like um the bird rides. Uh, so if you could potentially, well, no, if you could, please have a presentation or bring some more information on what it's gonna look like and plans or anything like that in the future. Doesn't have to be immediately, but this is super cool because cities bigger than us have it, and it is just an awesome thing that we're gonna bring to the city of Saginaw. And then I forgot to mention in the uh council comments about the groundbreaking for the Garber Tennis Courts. I was so sad I couldn't make it, cause I definitely would have been there, but if there's any way to get maybe more, I know we had a presentation, but maybe an updated one, cause I know some things have changed. Um, if we could have them present again, just to give more update on where that's going, that would be great. So two awesome small-scale infrastructure things going on in the city of Saginaw, great to hear it. Can't wait to see more, thanks.
Let me comment about the Garber Court, I was there. I got a chance to dig the dirt, to do the shoveling. Um, they are looking at possibly having it partially, if not all completed by September. And I'm sure they would be excited because they informed us at that time that they were working to get the Williams sisters to come and possibly do a match once it got finished, and so we all were excited about that. So, the once again, it was a real awesome groundbreaking ceremony. Um, didn't take long at all, but it was nice. But it was nice. So, do we have any other miscellaneous business? Yes. Monique, I think, I think I see your hand up?
Yes, um, I just wanted to um ask the city manager, I know in uh last meeting, we talked about doing the tour for Wick's Park, like to know where that stands at this particular time.
We're waiting for uh spring breaks and things like that to be over, because we have a lot of staff that are off, so we'll probably be looking, um I think we are looking to do that maybe more in late May or June or in that timeframe. Um, and because it's not a project that we're, we're looking for any decisions to be made on for some time.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, thank you.
Any more other discussion?
Uh, Mayor Moore, Councilman Oystash, whoops, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill. Go ahead.
Yeah, so um, the manager was talking earlier, they're watching the uh state of emergency that has come about from the board of commissioners and the county. And so um under the state statutes and the changes to the Open Meetings Act, if there is a local state of emergency, we could still meet virtual. And so at this point, what I'd like to do is make a motion to stay virtual with our council meetings until August thirty-first, when that state uh changes will expire. Or the Saginaw Board of Commissioners ends the state of emergency for the Saginaw County, and then we would go back to face-to-face.
Support.
It's been moved to second, any discussion?
I know this was a lengthy, I know this was a lengthy conversation earlier, so um, but I felt this was a needed motion to be made tonight.
Hearing no, any, is there any more discussion, I'm sorry? If there's no more discussion, let's take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Anything else, Councilman Oystash?
That's it?
Councilman Williams, I did not forget you.
I appreciate you, Mayor. Uh, no, I, I just wanna say that uh we have to do better as far as keeping the business of the city first and foremost, when we get into these meetings. Um, time is valuable, time is precious, and we just have to do better as a council, and I hope we do moving forward.
Thank you, any other discussion? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Bench supports.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? All those opposed? You guys have a great week.